Marshall Hucker, we want to know.
Same price, sooner or later.
I think the last time they were going through.
Well.
A rocker band.
I mean, of a current era.
I did go see the zoo.
Oh, that's cool.
Oh, I could, I could, you want to go? Yeah, my cousin's like, I'm like, I was like, I realized you guys go in. I was like, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, it's a little bit many people, but it's just like.
I was like, oh, you want to leave? Okay.
Really?
It seems like I haven't seen you forever. How are you doing?
You know.
Is Kelly going to be here today?
Yes.
Okay, good.
As far as I know.
Yeah.
I would buy it to see if you wanted a ride. Turn around.
Eric, hey. Hi.
Hi.
You're looking at Steve.
Are you, are you there?
See, I don't know which one.
Are you here for Jim? You're just here for yourself.
But see, that was. Well, it's nice.
You can see. You're right. It was two thousand. Two thousand and twenty. This is going to be brilliant. Start writing each direction. Wait down. Hey. I was putting my stage. Did he touch? Did he? So the positive is like everybody else. Uh-uh. I mean, no one. Yeah, Lily took COVID, took her in draft, but nothing. Yeah, it was on a dog. And now Caleb has it. And like, I have, I've had the quote, out of ten students, I've had eight sick. Yeah. Going around, I, I was thinking my COVID was like tomorrow, but they called me and said, you know.
Were you pretty good in the house?
Hello. Good. Uh, no. I'm here for you.
Did you actually? Did you feel better?
Sure. She's on the phone. In it. Only just asked how. Oh, there we go. Yeah. Totally part of it. Yeah. First you find. Yeah. And, and they did. They did. I did. Their kids that. Really, yeah? No, they're really cute. I like them. My students, again, they were educating me, you know. We have, I was going to say that. Okay. And I don't take anything from it, but I'm just going to tell you. What? You know, you literally, you literally look like you're twenty-one. Because then when you put the glasses on, it's forty-five all day. And I was like, and he was, really, I don't even think. Twenty. I'm like, I'm, I'm just saying. Well, I was like, hey. I like your. Yeah, we could have these. I do, no, but I like the man. Yeah, like, I like that. I can't find him. I know, I think, you know. I had racing on. Oh, yeah. Literally, almost like twelve years. Yeah, but, you know, when I, I think. And I think. And that's what, yeah, yeah. It was like, you know, and didn't say want more. The tree trunk. Remember when you were young and you were flexible, like, and then like, as you get older, you get more stout, like solid. And I was like, no. And then you say, well, that's happening here. I did. Well, and then you can, you can go there. But it was, like, Montana. Oh, put it there. Now it's in my head. Song. Yes. Which one's in your head now? Jody, now, now it is in my head again. I hope it's in all of your heads. It is. Is it? Heard the song. Good point. I don't think I've ever heard it. I listened to, I listened to Sixties and Seventies. Because with after that, I didn't hear it. No, those are just not that. Do you think? I did, but I didn't print through. I, I. Here's what I did. I printed out. Super good. I was like, oh, I'm going to print down. I was reading through it, I was reading it. Read through on the computer. Okay, okay, okay. Well, kind of like this. And then I left the pool and got home and I was like, thirty-two days sitting here with a printer. Oh. Fine. And it will. But I thought we were meant to be like, maybe you don't. That printer. Like the one we went to. Oh, one hundred percent. Or, or, yeah. That's. That's all I know how to do. Are you carrying your? No. Oh, yeah. I'm going to heat up your shirt now. Why don't you want to share your screen? Clean. Sorry, you're like, oh, I don't have a computer. Very minimal. Oh, yeah. Well. Is Kelly going to be? Well, yeah. She's next. I say she's next. That's not coming. But, speaking of. Oh, no, fine. Right there. We were, I was going to work. Hello. How are you? Good. Hello. Hello. You need it. Hello. You were just saying, I hope they're not tricking everybody getting the flu and, you know, laundry room here. I'm good. Good. My husband sent me a tag under my phone. I did, but I'm glad, I'm glad you put it on. Everything. I've gone all your way. No, I, yeah, it's great. All right. Me, you'll come order please stand to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming this evening. Be grateful to have you all here. Thank you. Welcome. Marshall? Here. Battle? Here. Daniel? Here. Serbin? Here. Eden? Here. Steve? President? Ronnie? Here. Mayor's coming. First of all, I hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. The weather's been lovely. We're in the thick of the Christmas season now. We have the straw coming up and I hope everybody has a good time. We have a flood recovery meeting coming up. We've advertised it online. I think that Carbon County has advertised it online. It's more public information about, you know, if you have flood questions. It's going to be happening in Fromberg. I'm not sure if it's going to be available via Zoom or online. It is. Oh, yeah. Oh, QR, QR code, isn't that bad? And so if you need information, more information about that, you're more than welcome to get ahold of City Hall or call the county or look online. But that is available and it is Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, which is tomorrow. So this is available for you. The next thing is there's going to be a downtown revitalization plan, community open house. We've talked about this a few times. I think they were out on Halloween. This is going to be Thursday, November thirtieth at the Roosevelt Center in the Collins Print Room. This, this too is available through our standard internet sources. And I think there's posters pasted around town. If, you know, it's really good to have everybody's input on these issues because, you know, that's how we make things. And if you have ideas, you know, we want, everybody needs to hear them. What I see, we, you know, it's great with engineering that we, we contract projects like this out to. And, and they have the expertise to put the plan together and then make proposals. And then they can work with council on that. So, I mean, you've seen, there's boxes and all sorts of things for that. So if you want any more information about this, you can do the same thing as what I said before, except don't call the county. They don't know anything about it. But you can also call City Hall. Next up is consent of appointment of a new public works director. And it's up for action. We have interviewed the candidates that we received applications from and made a conditional offer to a gentleman named Mike Mabel. He's from Shoto. I've talked to his references. Outstanding references. We all feel like he's a really good fit. Jim has seen him, our president, public works director.
Conventions a couple didn't tell me they could fit the city great.
We, we all think he's a great fit and, but we need, the charter requires council consent. And so if someone would like to make a motion for that. It's a move. A move to the consent of appointment of the new public works director, Mike Mabel. One second. Thank you. If there's any discussion, I'm more than happy to answer any questions if I can without violating some issues. Yes, I have a question on the process. We talked a little bit about this, I think, two weeks ago. So could you go over who the interview team was and how many candidates we interviewed and just give some background for us? Certainly. We interviewed three candidates. It was Lonnie and myself. What's the name of that? The name, Brian. And then Dean Webb, who is the public works director from Mercury. From Mercury, okay. So my concern with this is, having been in staffing myself for a period of time, is, and it's nothing about the candidate themselves, it's about the process. And making sure that anybody that we put forward is properly vetted. And so I was wondering when the job description had been updated? Was that updated before you posted it for this particular job or? Do you recall when it was updated? Um, I don't know when, when all the job descriptions were done, they were done a while ago. Okay, because it seems like this might need to be refreshed. And.
I'm going to say they were done about two thousand and eighteen, the whole, the whole public works job descriptions were all redone in two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, so four years. Five years. When you got here, when you were made a full-time employee, I think you, it was gone. I think when we got the, the contract, I think that one was updated. Oh, no, it was like twenty twenty. So, so anyway, so I have a couple of concerns. One, like I said, is that, and this has nothing to do with the candidate himself, but just the process. With the job description was one question. My question also, whenever you're doing interviewing to people, is what skill sets the different interviewers are bringing to the table. And as I look at this job description, it talks about someone working significantly with community engagement, public involvement with elected officials, other policymakers, and citizens collaborates with the executive department, city council, and other city departments on strategy and policy. And I don't know, at least I know to my knowledge, for the public works depart, committee, we were not brought into the, to the discussion at all about this whole process or what we might suggest. To me, it would seem like if you're going to have them working with other policymakers, including city council, that you would have at least had somebody from city council on that interview team, along with maybe people from the community, as it talks about here. I think of Great West, and they're a contractor that we have, getting some input from them. And so, again, nothing against this particular candidate, but I just feel like this, there wasn't a lot of transparency in this process. And as I went back after asking a few questions, it doesn't seem like this person was really, to me, vetted sufficiently for a job that's that critical to Red Lodge, being a department head. I mean, this wasn't just a, this wasn't just a person that a department head is hiring and that you're vetting. This is someone that's going to be a significant player in the future of Red Lodge and Public Works. And I think it should have had more, or it should have more scrutiny. And I understand, you know, I've been told, well, you know, it's not that big of a deal, the person's on a one-year probation. But I think it does a disservice to the community and to the candidate if you say, well, we're going to rush through this process, get it done, and then if we don't like them, we'll let them go. You know, I don't think that's the right way to handle staffing. So, anyway, so I just have some real concerns with the way this was handled. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions about this candidate and consent for him? Do we, can you give us a little bit more background about Mike? Mike has been the public works director in Shoto for, I think, eight years, seven years. He is, he, he's the person responsible for, he put all of the infrastructure of Shoto on GIS so that all, it could be mapped. He's very forward-thinking. He's very good at budgeting. He's, I called each of his three references. One of them was a past mayor who, he laughed and he said, well, I shouldn't tell him he's this good because I don't want to let him go. But you'll be lucky to have him. And two former engineers who gave him an outstanding reference, they've said that they've worked with public works directors throughout the state and he was one of the best. So, you know, I think. I was just going to also add that he does have his water and sewer operator certifications. So he's very knowledgeable in that aspect. A lot of, you know, I think they, they work on the lining of the pipes up there in Shoto and that was a new thing that he brought in for them. So he has very forward-thinking. And again, you know, as I look at this, it said, one of the qual, one of the qualifications was a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, public and administration or related fields required. And I, I don't know, we, I don't know if anybody saw his resume. We were never given a copy of his resume, so I'm not sure. But that also, again, I, I just think that, you know, I mean, I looked and it was what posted on October third. And then people were, let's see, would remain open until filled with preference given to applicants received by October twenty-fifth. And so that is a very short time period to accept candidates for a job that's this important. And so I just don't, I guess to me, I don't understand why there was such a rush to hire. I understand that the new mayor, Dave Westwood, wasn't on the interview team as well. If this person starts after January, that would be their immediate boss. So I guess to me, everything's like, seems to me like it was accelerated and it, it doesn't really appear to be a reason why it needed to be. And, and there, nothing was accelerated. We took care of this if, if I was going to be mayor for six more years or if there was eight more mayors. We took care of it. Yes, Jim?
It'd be ideal to have him start before I'm gone, where the two of us can sit down and go through what I've got going, what I've been doing. I know the man personally. I've met him at several conventions. One of the best about it, he's been in this position in another town in Montana. He knows the financial end of this, of the grants and all the stuff that have, that happened to keep infrastructure and stuff going. He'd be a perfect fit. If he can start before I'm gone, we could have a few days together. I could get him lined out and he could just slip right in here and it would work great for the city. You bring someone from outer state or the other people we have from Minnesota applying and everyone other, they're going to have a, a real long learning curve where this person will fit right in, being in Montana, and that's what we are.
He also had flood experience from the flooding in Shoto.
Yep.
And, you know, I don't, I don't want you to get off track here. The, the charter requires consent, not approval. Approval of the higher standard than consent. But, you know, it is our, it's my responsibility to hire personnel. And I've had discussions with Dave about this and you were here when Dave said, you know, I'm not the mayor till the first. You know, the other thing is, I mean, I of course respect the fact that Dave's going to be the next mayor and, you know, he's going to be in charge. But, I mean, these things take a long time. It takes, you know, a month to get any applicants. It takes another few weeks to schedule them. And we don't really want any gaps in service. When there's freezing issues and ice issues and snow removal issues, we need somebody on board. So I, I think that the staff who, who handles this handles it professionally and they're well versed in how to handle it. And we look at the qualifications and weigh everything very carefully. And I think if you have issues with staff handling that, then that's something that should be addressed in the charter. No, just with the process that was, the way it was handled, like I say, was obvious to me anyway, just from my interaction with you, that there wasn't a lot of, it just wasn't a well-documented process that was followed. And so I'm just saying, all of these questions I brought up are valid questions. So people have to make their own decision whether or not they think it's sufficient. But I think just from a public standpoint, people need to be aware. But, and, and another thing is, I mean, we also have a position for planning director open. The way these things go is you don't know if you're going to get any qualified applicants. As you know, the cost of living in Red Lodge is very high and we're looking for a candidate that would fit well. It's poss, it's very possible, if not likely, that we would have not had a candidate and it would have, it would have fallen into Dave's lap. But the next mayor's going to have his hands full and I'm not going to pass my job off on to him. So, you know, I, I don't have any problem at all. I work with Dave well and, you know, I, that's not, that's not an issue. So, yeah, I'm, I'm just asking for your consent based on, you know, the, the law and, and the charter. And so if you have any more questions about this person's qualifications, I'm more than happy to answer them as best I can. I didn't bring his CV because that was a part, that's not part of the process. But I'll assume as best to answer your questions. I, I was just curious, you said there were three candidates. Was there something specific about him that set him? I'll tell you. We had a candidate from Michigan. Yes, thank you. Who didn't seem to have a lot of relevant experience with the things that we're doing here in Red Lodge. He seemed like a nice person. He was probably our third choice and I think if it was, the, the, so he was our top choice. Our second choice had, was a, was a retired engineer. He had worked all over in Idaho, in Wyoming, very good credentials, but his job record, he didn't last more than two years at any position. And we felt that this Mike would have better rapport with the crew. At, I mean, he seemed to have good rapport with all, all people involved. So, and, but the second candidate withdrew his, his application after we interviewed him. And then, you know, I think if it was down to the third applicant, we probably would have kept the application period open. But, you know, I mean, there, there's a timeliness factor. I mean, you don't want to get the wrong person, but you also don't want to, I mean, you know, it's really good to have a public works director with all the things that are going on. And I think he would be a very good fit. And he, Great West, you know, he'll be able to work with them on the sewer stormwater project. And so, I mean, as far as qualifications for, for the job, he was well suited. Do you have any more? Did I answer? Yes, no. Yeah, I was, yeah, because I was just kind of curious what was so great about him over the other candidates. And, you know, it's like finding a tenant. You know, you think it's a great tenant and maybe it isn't. I mean, I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I can't see into the future, but I, I feel very confident that this is a very good candidate and, as does the rest of the staff. He took the initiative to ask if he could come back and meet the staff and meet the crews and tour the public workshop. And, you know, we were kind of taken aback about that because other candidates hadn't done that. But he did. He made a special trip to come here. He went out to the shop, met the guys. Eric, you met him? Did you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, he's like a good guy.
I mean, he had, he wanted to see our equipment and, and, you know, that shows me that he wants to see what he's doing, which is reasonable. And, you know, we're fortunate that, I, I believe he's found housing, but, you know. You know, it, it can fall, it can fall through, you know, that's how these things go, so. Well, that's, another concern is, in the event, you know, there's always something, is there plan B? Is there another candidate that's ma, or would we just open? We, we would have to open it again, which, you know, and, you know, that's part of the, you anticipate that. I mean, because, you know, I mean, we've all been on job hunts and we've all had experiences with that. I mean, it, I mean, maybe, maybe his housing, it will fall through and his plan will change. And then we would open it back up and we would open it up and if we didn't find any ca, you know, we would go through the same steps and if it ended up in Dave's lap, then it'll end up in Dave's lap. But we do our jobs until our job is done. And so it doesn't help. Yeah. Any more questions? Any discussion? All right, roll call. Battle? Yes. Daniel? Yes. Serbin? No. Eden? Yes. Steve? Yes. Ronnie? Yes. Thank you. All right. In the packet is an application for the Montana tour. It's similar to last year. Basically, they're parking cars up on Oreo Road for the week that they're on tour. All the details are in the packet. I'll probably be issuing that permit in the next couple of days. So if you have any comments, get them to me soon. And then I have another issue that I'd like to cover. One of the things I want to mention is, I've heard a few comments and I felt the same way before I was mayor, that it is frustrating when you make comments in, in the audience and they're not addressed. And we've tried to explain, part of that is because the meeting laws, you know, require notice. And so anything we're going to talk about needs to be noticed. Mayor's comments, not so much because they're not going to be discussed. But anytime there's a discussion, it has to be properly noted. That's the law. So, but, but I also want to, I also want to say that when, when you guys ask a question or somebody online asks a question during the meeting, especially during. or somebody online asks a question during the meeting, especially during, um, public comment period on issues, like today, tonight we're going to talk about the airport and I think there's, um, there's a few other resolutions. Well, uh, public comment period, public comment period will come for the airport. But, um, oh, and also to clarify the mayoral appointments, there's a public hearing. But when we have those public hearings, if, if you ask a question, you know, I, I typically kind of expect, you know, those questions to be answered, but I don't write them down. But, um, I would like to make more of an effort to make sure that your questions are answered. Because, I mean, I mean, it's reasonable. But, I mean, we get to talking and we don't always remember to address your questions. But that's important and so I'd like to ask council to try to, you know, make sure that those questions, if there's any made during public comments, that they're answered. So, there's that. And then, um, I have another thing about rumors. And periodically in the last two years, I've had to address rumors I've heard, just to make sure we do our best here at City Hall to keep things factual. Recently I came across an online news blog that said a couple of things that need to be addressed. It's not the first and probably won't be the last, but this sort of thing isn't right and I hope the next mayor doesn't have to deal with it. This article is titled, "Red Lodge's Council's Second Affirmative Vote on Airport Ordinance Should Have Been Final, Mayor's Error Necessitates Another." And this article makes two points. One, that this should be the final vote, but for my error. And two, that the city and public were in fact, were in fact involved with the process. And I'd like to clarify those two points. Number one, there were no errors on last week's agenda, that it was the first reading of the ordinance establishing the airport boundary. The agenda was put together exactly as the procedure requires. Council provided the proposed ordinance, the city attorney reviewed it. An ordinance takes two readings. This council has presented a different council four times, a different version four times. Whenever changes are made to a proposed ordinance for something more than typos, the ordinance has to go back for a first reading. Council knew about the changes and they're the ones who discussed them with the city attorney. I was not part of that. I merely put the agenda, I merely put on the agenda their request and they acknowledged this would be, again, the first reading. To say it was some sort of negligence on my part is not factual and it is not accurate. The second claim made by the news blogger took issue with my statement that the public has not been involved. Well, the public has not been involved, nor has air, council's airport committee attempted to involve the public. This decision is going to have financial impacts and impacts on growth and I continue to believe that a much deeper due diligence and involvement of the community and impact should have been made. There's been no expertise and no due diligence, no financial studies, no safety studies, no examination of growth needs, community entrances or overall impacts on community issues. These things are typically done with big issues. If you recall during the events discussions, we had a public meeting at Old Roosevelt. We had an eight-member committee for the short-term rental issue, followed by the planning board along with a questionnaire. For the current downtown master plan, we have Great West working on what the community wants with more questionnaires. I, I think they were out on Halloween night asking questions of the community and many more public meetings outside of council or plans. They've talked to the business alliance and are planning a community open house. So when I said the airport study has not involved the public, I meant it. I've referenced the draft airport master plan, it's nearly done. You will probably be asked after it's finished for your thoughts, but the bulk of the discussions will have already been made. That, um, draft airport plan is available in past agendas if you want to read it, but it's, it's nearly done. So my point is this, don't fall prey to everything you read on the internet or hear on the streets. If a person can't rely on the facts to make their case, they must not have much of a case. If you don't like something or something sounds funny, call me. Call a department head, call the front desk, call council, call all of us. But do your best to get the facts and let us know what you think. We'll make the best of it. Thank you. Uh, periodically I feel obliged to address rumors, the rumor mill and where they're coming from. The effort isn't to undermine anybody or make anybody look bad. The effort is to keep the information accurate so the community is all on board and we're all working in the same direction to benefit the community. That's what we're here for. So, that will go on to public comments. And if you'd like to make a public comment, please push the podium, keep your comments limited to three minutes, follow the directions on the wall and we'll get started. So, Sherry.
Sorry, we're in the luxurious chamber. Excuse my appearance, I just came from the tree lighting at Carnegie. Santa and Mrs. Claus arrived and greeted all the kids from the Boys and Girls Club. If you've never been there and seen their faces as they run up to see Santa, it really is magical. So if you have time next year, please join us. And as always, the tree lighting kind of signals, let the holidays begin, let the shopping begin, and we all know how important that is to our downtown retail shops. So I just wanted to update you on some fun holiday things that are going on. The next thing that's going to happen is the best dress window contest. We'll be doing judging, secret judging going around the next two days. This is a fun way to remind all the businesses to get dressed, dressed up for Stroll.
If you know.
Kind of snuck up on me. But we are ready and that's another reason I'm here. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting when you had it on the agenda, but if you had any questions, I'd love to answer. It is this weekend, Friday and Saturday, from five to nine. Broadway will be closed from Eighth to Fourteenth Street. Jim's going to help me with that, thank you. It takes a team. I appreciate that, everything the city does and the whole town comes together to pull the caddy off. So I'm excited, the weather's going to be good. I think we're going to be really busy. The East Lane this year will be open for emergencies. Nonprofits are placed on the west, that keeps the lane open for the fire department, they need to come through. We'll have all the normal things going on, blade parade, wagon rides, Santa, the Elks, fire pits, all of that. All the updates are on redlodge.com. There's been a lot of new events added this year. I'm excited. I keep adding them on the website, so please tune in there if there's something special you want to see. And that's it. Remy, do you have any questions that I can help with?
I'd just like to thank you for everything you do with the chamber and the Stroll and everything. It's a lot of work.
I love this town. We're just, as we're riding the Beartooth Electric truck up and down and waving, it's, it's the best town ever. I don't think I ever want to leave. And thank you to Beartooth Electric. They literally spend thousands of dollars to get that tree decorated and the lights up, so thank you for that and thank you to them as well.
Thanks, Sherry.
Thanks, Sherry. I have elf hair, I'm not going to take it.
All right, any more comments? Is there any comments online? All right, I'll make one more call for comments from those physically present and those online. All right, we'll move on. Thank you, Sherry. You're the only guy that spoke, so. All right, next up is standing committees. We'll start with admin and finance, uh, general fund budget presentation. Is that Jim?
That's me. Well, do you want to, do you want to start with?
Oh, sure.
Answering the odd question.
Yeah, before Jim gets into this, um, there were, uh, when did you do the last budget presentation?
August.
August, maybe? There were, um, some lingering questions that were unanswered and we finally have those answered and I will take full responsibility for how long it took to do that, but, um, some of them were pretty in-depth. So the, uh, the online document is updated with the answers and that, I believe, will be on the website tomorrow morning?
Yes.
Yeah. So you can, you can read all the answers to the questions, um, on the online document if you are interested. And do you know where that will be posted, what, posted on?
Uh, on the website, yeah.
I couldn't find it, so. It's under, it's under budget. It's under resources tab.
Yeah. Budget, we're all hung up there.
So resources, budget tab and. Budget, that means public presentation, I believe that's the first one. Draft budget review, public presentation, under little year, excuse me, 2024?
Yep.
So we'll upload the new one.
So that, yeah, so tomorrow morning that will be uploaded.
Public presentation.
Public presentation will also be there. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your patience. We dug out those answers.
Thanks for doing that. Okay, um, so, um, folks have, you've heard admin committee mentioned a number of times this year that, um, we have a need to improve our city's general fund. And so the idea was to actually explore some of the possible avenues for doing that and, um, amass that information for everyone to digest and, and the hopes that we can pass on recommendations to, um, the next council for avenues to pursue. This particular presentation was also prompted by, um, the union rep for, uh, the police department coming to one of our admin committee meetings a few months ago to express their concern over the, um, over the inability of the city to really negotiate well because we just don't have the funds to do so. So that's the purpose for this presentation. I'm kind of sad that it's not like standing room only. It's been standing room only for months and months and now that I want to do a budget presentation, I'm excited. But it'll be, it'll be on the website and I'll be, I have done my best, um, to provide links to where I got information and if there's any questions, you can ask Jody. So, uh, thank you. So, but just to go over again why we're doing this, uh, we're going to provide a general overview of some basics of the budget. Once again, many of these slides will be familiar to those of you who are here for the budget presentation when we pass the 2023, 2024 budget. Repetition is a great tool. We're going to talk about the admin committee's description of the need and timeline. We're going to go over a brief summary of a few of those possible courses of action and then outline the current committee's recommendation. So, um, this definition should look really familiar to everybody, so essentially why do we have a budget at all? It's to fund the projects and the programs that are, um, that the community has decided are essential and priorities for, for the community. Form the basis of taxes and taxes and charges, establish legal spending limits, guide staff operations and assist, assist in preventing financial crisis. And I have said before and will say again that I think that, you know, passing the budget is one of the most important things that our city council does every year. This is just to highlight once again that there is a formula that we are required by the state to follow in order to set our property tax, our tax budget every year. And that that formula does not grow at pace with inflation on its own. It is not set up to do that by state code. And so essentially what that means is we have been losing buying power for the better part of 15 years or 20 years or 30 years now because we have not, um, we have not taken steps to improve, uh, and build our general fund. I left this slide in here because I, because I feel like it's really important, especially given this year where everybody has, um, now gotten, seen the shock of their, um, property taxes and, um, I want folks to be able to refer to this later and understand that, and we're going to get to another slide in a second, but, um, just because our property values go up doesn't mean our city suddenly has more funds to spend. And I don't think, I think that that's counterintuitive. I think most people think that that's the case. I'm paying more in to the coffers. The city should have more money to do things like fix our street. And unfortunately, it's just not designed to be that way without this council taking additional steps. And so I added this slide to show that essentially relative to other municipalities, the city of Red Lodge's property taxes are extremely low. The proportion of anyone's given tax bill that goes to the city is low compared with other municipalities and that is for one main reason. We have not, we have not raised mills in so long that the increased property value over the last, say, 30 years hasn't resulted in a proportional increase in the city's revenue. And so to just look at this slide a little more closely, um, the proportion of Bridger's taxes, tax bill that goes directly to the city is thirty-six, little over thirty-six percent. For roundup, it's thirty-one, for the city of Red Lodge is thirteen. Now, I, I recognize that these communities are not, you know, they have different sizes, right? And so this is our best effort to compare apples to apples because, um, for the most part, these communities provide the same services that we provide with our, with our general fund as well. And yes, it is the case that they have fewer residences to tax, but it also means that they have fewer residences to serve with city services. And so, um, I think that this does a good job of illustrating what we're trying to convey when we say just because property taxes go up doesn't mean the city suddenly has more funds. And so, um, we lost about fifteen percent of our buying power from 2015 and honestly, that number's kind of low. I was very conservative when I, um, you can kind of skip the fund structure. I mean, let's just get to right to the general fund. So we're talking about trying to increase the general fund, so it's good to talk about what does the general fund pay for? And it funds the ordinary operations of local government, um, which is financed with your property taxes and other non-tax general revenues that, um, and not accounted for in other, in other government funds. We pay, or we provide, uh, public safety, public works, parks and rec, library and general government with our general fund. And that left side just shows the different revenue streams that come in to fund the general fund. I have updated this slide, the last time you saw this, it didn't have our property taxes in there because we didn't know what our mills were going to make. But now we do. And so you can see that our property taxes make up about thirty-one percent. I, it does look okay on there. I was like, you can zoom in on this if you go to the actual website, you can look in. And I would also say I've included a link at the bottom for where I got these, this information from and all of the documents that I used to put these together are available on the website under budget. So if you go to re, the resources tab, it's right there. You can, you can look at every single one of them, the approved revenues, the approved budget and the document we used with, with the mills in it and calculated. So there's references to those here and you can go find them on your own. So two point three five million basically in income, two point three five million in expenditures. You can see here the police are about thirty-two percent. Fire, it, right now is there about thirteen point one percent. One thing I want to mention is there's two, there's actually three categories of expenses in general funds that are mill-based and not dollars-based. Uh, that would be our fire services, fire protection services, I should say, the airport and the library. And that will become important in just a second. Am I going too fast? Is everything, everybody tracking? Okay.
Wait, wait, tell me the other.
Yep, go ahead.
Can you explain the expenditure on fire? I thought the fire thing was separate, but does the city kick in?
The city pays for our, for our fire protection with your tax dollars, our general fund.
The ambulance district is separate.
The ambulance district is separate, but fire, fire is required by all communities, all cities to provide.
Thanks.
In some form or fashion. Yep.
Good question.
How many does the library?
Seven, right? Right now the library is seven mil. Sorry, I should have put that in there and I didn't. The airport's one mil, fires twenty. Okay. So description of the need and urgency. So this is something the committee's talked about for a little while now. On the left is the need and on the right is the urgency. So we identified five different, um, areas of need. So one, and really is kind of at the top of the list, is that, uh, we can't provide competitive wages for law enforcement and city staff right now. And that relates to the second bullet, which is we- right now. Um, and that relates to the second bullet, which is we are, as a city, we're losing money because we are investing in training new personnel who are just starting out in their careers. And we invest in their training and then they leave the community for better pay. Um, and that's no fault of theirs, right? Um, but we need to be able to have competitive wages for our, for our community staff. Um, we've also heard, you know, admin committee, also land use and planning, also through the STR ordinances and things, like for multiple years now, that, the both the years that I've sat on here, the community time and again, in one form or fashion, is asking for better code enforcement. And getting, uh, added code enforcement officer requires additional capacity, which requires additional funds. So they need to come from somewhere. Um, and then the mills-based earmarking. So fire is the largest one, but again, the library and the airport. Um, because they're mill-based, over time, they end up taking, those three areas end up taking a ever-increasing slice of the general fund pie, if that makes sense. So last year, Bonnie, you can help me. Last year, our dollars committed to the fire department was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And this year, because of what a mill is worth this year, it is three hundred and seven thousand dollars, just over that. And so mills-based causes havoc when it comes time to planning ahead and, and preparing for, are we going to have enough resources from year to year? Um, and then lastly, uh, the anticipated cost increases for electricity. So I, at the very end of this, there's a reference slide that has a couple of articles about the Northwestern Energy Rate hike and also a, um, report that I asked Bonnie to produce about the city paying ever more increasing rates for their electricity. And we don't, we see that continuing to happen as a committee. So why is it important to talk about these things now? Um, the unions are urging the city to address wages ASAP to avoid a strike. Um, again, losing money to train new personnel is an ongoing problem. Um, and I'm hoping that, in particular, that Chief Schrock can give the new council some added information on specifics of that, like how many of our, um, police officers have left for other communities. Uh, as our community grows, residents are growing impatient with the lack of capacity to address code violations. And then again, I mentioned the mills-based earmarking. So there's some numbers there for you. The Northwestern Energy hike, uh, it has increased from a hundred and forty-two thousand in twenty twenty to a hundred and seventy-six thousand in twenty twenty-three. And, uh, as of October twenty twenty-three, they will be, um, it's an additional twen- estimated twenty-eight percent increase that they are expecting to pass on to all of their customers. So that, that's substantial for a community like, well, you know, for a city like ours that has very, I mean, our energy bill is one of the highest things we pay every month. And then urgency, again, the department has to start negotiating budget in, you know, next, the next sixty days, basically. And so, um, making decisions now, it takes a long time for those to come into effect. Um, we have to start talking about this conversation now if we're going to be able to make any changes that will have an impact and, um, and avoid some of the consequences we're concerned about. Okay, almost done. Possible courses of action. We could do nothing. Um, we could always do nothing, right? That's always an option. Um, if we do nothing, we have been, uh, we have been advised that , um, the community, we have to help the community understand that services will start being cut. And I think people can already look around her, in our town and community and feel where some of that is starting to fray already. Um, we could create a public safety district via resolution. We could also generate a ballot initiative to create a public safety mill levy, which is not subject to mill cap. Um, I put November twenty twenty-four on there because that's the next time the general ballot is up. So the idea would be to get something, if we wanted to pursue that, to get something together before that date. Uh, we could generate a ballot initiative to create a public safety district, also would go on ballot in November. We, um, have talked about annexing the city of Red Lodge into the current fire district, which, um, the mechanism for that, the property owners themselves, um, sign a petition. Some of the details of that in a minute. We can also, as a temporary solution, um, try to renegotiate for fire services to be provided based on a dollar amount with an inflation increase that, rather than mills. Um, not sure how that would be received, but that is a possibility, particularly in the short term. Uh, and then I believe we've, uh, asked the fire department to identify possible resort tax deferrals. So that, for, for the fire department, and that would be, Jody, you want to chime in here? That would be for capital project.
Right. Resort tax can be used for, um, capable, capital expenditures for the city. Um, it can be used for, um, salaries, things like that for the fire department or the police department. It can only be used for capital expenditures in those two areas. So if there is something that they are using our three hundred thousand for specifically for capital, whatever that may be, equipment, um, we could, um, transfer that out of resort tax instead of out of the general fund if we have an itemized list of what that is.
And so we've asked the, we've asked the fire department for a more detailed budget now that they have their mills. Um, and then the last thing, we can review budget, those budget allocations that are mills-based, those three I talked about, fire, library, and the airport, and explore other possible cost-saving options, you know, that aren't, maybe that aren't based on mills. Um, I did want to mention something about grant funding. Those of you that don't know, it's my day job. That's mostly what I do, is write a lot of grants. Um, and grants are excellent resources for leveraging our tax dollars, getting match money. Um, but I would argue, and the committee has, we've kind of talked about this, that it's a short-term solution, that that grants are a core tool to provide sustainable and consistent funding, particularly for general fund needs. So, um, while I would wholeheartedly, um, support and continue to support the city going after grant dollars to fill some of these gaps, I want to do it with a caveat that that's not the solution. It is a avenue to help temper a bigger, to kind of help give us some breathing room to have some larger conversations with the community. Okay. Recommendations. So as a committee, we, we are going to recommend that, um, we generate a ballot initiative to create a public safety district and to have that on the ballot in November of twenty twenty-four. Um, to annex the city of Red Lodge into the current fire district via petition, renegotiate for fire services to be provided with some capital expenses moved to resort tax, as we talked about, and then to do that kind of deep dive review of budget allocations that are mills-based to explore possible, um, alternatives that are, that save the city more money. Um, so, yeah.
Could you elaborate a bit on how the public safety district generates revenue towards the general fund?
Yeah. So because that's a pie piece, go back to the expenditures. If you look at the police department taking up thirty-two percent of that pie, right? Essentially, what we would say is we're going to create a district by which the community puts in money that's specific for public safety, and therefore this piece of pie comes out of the general fund. It is still a tax. Like it is still, you're still providing additional dollars as a community for this resource. It's just no longer paid for with general fund, right? So if you move it out, then that thirty-two percent becomes available for the other things in the general fund that we want to pay for.
So by resolution that we move that to a property tax line item, is that how it works?
So it is the, if, there is an ability to do it via resolution. Our committee is recommending that we do not do that, that we do it via ballot so that the voters get to say whether or not they want to do that versus resolution.
And it kind of comes down to what, what services do you want, you know? And, and it wouldn't be the whole budget for the police department coming out of that. It would just be to offset some of that expense and help with that.
Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, it wouldn't just be the thirty-two percent off. It would be a little more nuanced than that. But that, that's how it would create more general fund is because your city would be taxed, the residents would be taxed for that particular, um, service in a different way than providing, as a line item versus being, taking it from general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, okay. So recommendations, next up, here we go. The admin committee, along with the public safety committee, would work with the city staff and Red Lodge Fire and Rescue to negotiate a new contract for fire services, um, and make a budget request sometime in the next couple of months. Um, and so that revolves around this idea of, um, maybe we move some capital expenditures to resort tax. Maybe we try to get them to say they don't want to spend three hundred and seven thousand dollars because that's even more than I think what they were expecting. Um, second, second, next step, uh, public safety committee works with Red Lodge, uh, city staff and fire and rescue to pursue annexation into the fire district. So, um, the committee is actually working on a resolution draft as a first step that would come to this council at the next meeting. And that resolution would simply say, we of the council support the community in, um, petitioning for annexation. That's all that would be. It's just that it would be a resolution of support of that action because that action needs to come from the community and needs to come from citizens who own property. Uh, and then the third, next step would be admin and public safety committee, again, working with staff to, and the union to determine how much funds are actually needed to fully fund the public safety needs of the city and then develop that ballot language before June of twenty twenty-four. That should say, that should not say resolution. That should just say ballot language. I want to be clear. It would be a ballot. It would not be, it's not that admin committee's suggestion that we do it via resolution. It's our recommendation that we do it via ballot. So I will edit that, I will edit that sentence out.
I know what you meant.
Yeah. Questions or feedback? So this presentation, along with the previous presentation that Chris mentioned, with all the answers to the audit questions, which, uh, no surprise, is not sexy or flashy. Like there's nothing there really. Um, but the present, this presentation and the previous budget presentation with the audit answers are available, or will be available as of tomorrow on the city's website, um, along with the audio recording of this presentation once the minutes are approved. Um, and then once again, if you have any questions, there's Jody's email. Thank you, Jody.
I'll be here in a minute, so either way.
And then I'll just mention, there's one last page that's got that Northwestern Energy data and references on that page if you're interested and want to look at that more closely.
That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
That's a lot of work. And it, you know, because you just heard it, if you have questions, I mean, I'm happy to spend five or 10 minutes. If, if you would like to make a proposal, if you would like more information, if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to spend a little time on it. If, if, if there's something, though, that gets in depth, we should put that on the agenda for another discussion. But did you have something, Derek?
Yeah, I did, actually. So I was wondering, I went to the last, um, admin and finance committee meeting, and you guys talked about possibly doing the same presentation again at the next city council meeting. And given that, um, people have not had a chance to look at that in advance and think of questions, would you still consider doing that? And then we'd also have a chance to look at the audit, um, responses and also the questions that were brought up during budget. Because I have a feeling that a lot of these questions, while it'd be great to just bombard Jody with questions, I think a lot of this, a lot of this, um, conversation would be useful to the greater public and not just to target individuals. So I'd like to make that suggestion. I don't know if you're still considering doing that or not.
I'm fine doing it again. I had the expectation that I would do it again. Um, but it's, I mean, it's our meeting, so I'm fine with it.
And my, you know, I, I don't know what's on the next agenda, but it's, it's, you know, right by Christmas.
Right by Christmas.
And I'm not, you know, if, if you want to do that, maybe it would be better to have like a public meeting about it because I think, I think these are very impactful issues. And if you're going to do any of those things, you're going to need public meetings. I mean, it's kind of, it deserves a space of its own, in my opinion. But, I mean, you guys can determine, you know, what you want to do. If you want to be that hairy beast, I don't know if we'd have this many people there.
We stick around till January?
Will you all bring friends, is my question? Like if I do, like in the evening at Roosevelt or something, will you bring your friends?
And, and Jen's going to be here even when she's not like that.
Be working in the corner.
Yes, Sandy?
I just wanted to be clear that if a city is annexed into the fire department, then the city doesn't have to pay the mills out of general fund any longer. Instead, the expense for the fire department would go on our taxes.
Correct, right, correct.
So that would be a savings of a variable. Okay.
But it won't be any saving to the taxpayers.
Yeah, I just wanted, want folks to understand, it would still be moving in the same way that a public safety, uh, ballot measure would move money out of the general fund. You'd still be paying for it. So it is still a tax. We'd have to still demonstrate to the community, this is what you get for your money. This is why we want to do it this way. Um, but yes, that's, that's essentially what would happen.
There would be some relief.
Yes.
Right. Well, the difference is, though, is if we get annexed into the fire district, the money goes directly to the fire department. It no longer goes to the city. We're, we don't pay that anymore.
Right.
But we still get the same amount of mill.
But we still get the same.
Right, yeah. No, I'd say we would not have anything to do with that money coming in anymore. It wouldn't come to the city at all.
But there wouldn't be a decrease in the taxes that you pay for the city.
Right, no, correct, right.
And then you would pay an additional amount of taxes.
You'd have a line item for the fire department and a line item for the ambulance district.
Well, there, there aren't any solutions where we all have to pay less money. I'm sorry to say, because I don't like that.
It's a very good question to under, so that we can really understand, like, what it means for my household. Like that's, that's the thing that I think is most important for people to understand is like, there's charts and there's graphs and there's, you know, spreadsheets and all. But at the end of the day, you need to know how it's going to impact your family. And, and so we're trying to make that as digestible as possible.
Yeah, question.
I know. It might be an esoteric question, but at what point shall we dissolve the city? If we keep shoving everything out and making a district, we have no need to have a city. And that's pretty ironic, given places in the state where more development has occurred and they are hating having all these separate districts. That it's simply, um, a shell game as far as playing with people's money and spinning it off with a description and people don't follow it and don't understand it until, well, what the heck? Why don't we just dissolve the city? We can have a library district. We can have a sewer and water district. These things are all legal in the state. Um, so I think that question has to sit there in great big bold letters next to any of these proposals. That if we don't see any benefit in having a city, well, we can go ahead and do that. But are there benefits in having a city in the sense that it is one place to go to try to deal with government issues that are very local? That it should be a place where economies of scale for certain things are relevant? Um, the more I hear about, oh, a district for this, a district for that, the more nervous I get, having dealt with the other side and continuing to deal with the ordeals in another part of the state.
Ma'am, can I ask you to state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Beth Hutchinson, two nineteen West twelve.
And that's a whopper of a question to lay on. But I mean, it's a very, it's a good question for thought. And, and so if any council would like to say anything, but I mean, that's it.
I, I, I think, uh, I think one of the ways I could just fill and get to your point is, is, um, yeah, you're right. Like it is, it's an avenue that the, these are two avenues that the admin committee felt were viable. And the other, the other avenue that you don't see here is just to put on a general ballot to raise mills. And we, it's not there because we know it won't pass. We know that the community is very upset about their property taxes being raised. And that the overall sense is if you're, if you're, if I'm going to pay more money, at least tell me exactly what you're going to do with it. And these were two avenues to be able to do that. But to your point, and I think future admin committees and future councils will have to wrestle with that. It's just, this is, these are two tools, but they're not the only ones in our toolbox. Another tool would be to just put it on the ballot to raise mills.
If things properly explained, it can work to raise mills. Because the other way, you're conceivably dealing with five to seven, seven. Because the other way, you're conceivably dealing with five to seven separate districts who have a lot more flexibility to raise mills and it just becomes perpetual. I mean, we're used to having a school district. And we, they seem to be able to raise mills at liberty, people believe in it. But for, for a city to have coherence, to have an identity, you need to be able to find a way to get the money out of your pocket. The other way, I think, is more dangerous.
Beth, I want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to ask a question and then we can come back to yours, but I don't want to run out the clock. And if, if, if we need to keep this conversation, that's a good, those are good concepts.
I'd just like to ask the rest of the council, do you want me to do this again on the 13th or on the 12th when we meet again, or do you want me to do it as a community presentation? I would do either.
I would rather just do it as a meeting, but just because it's not that long of a presentation and then we can, you know, if we have questions about, about it, we can answer them then.
I'd like a community presentation because I think that you guys are going to continue, you guys meeting, whoever, you know, you guys. You guys. You guys. All right, this is going to be a big issue and we want as many people to come as possible and I don't think the day before Christmas is going to do it. I don't care if we do it both.
We're not talking about the day before Christmas, we're talking about next time.
Yeah.
Yeah, December 12th.
Yeah. But, I mean, I'm happy to do it two times, but whatever you guys want to use the time for.
I think December 12th is fine as a starting. I mean, it could, we could then do another one later to a community, but I feel like if, to Terry's point, since people have had a chance to see it and digest it, then maybe if they have questions, they can come to the next one.
And I just would like you to add one more thing to your foil that, or your presentation. I'm showing my H here, same foil. But anyway, the other thing we can do is do an internal audit and look for opportunities to work smarter and more efficiently. And I think we should run this a little bit more like a business and look at it from that angle because perhaps there's areas where we could find some money that we didn't know was available for, for more efficient uses, so.
Thank you, Terry. Does anybody else have a question? Is there anybody online who has a question or comment? Finances are a very big part of city governance. These conversations need to continue, they always have and they always will. So I'm, I look forward to more fresh energy in my chair and some of the other chairs. I look forward to hearing more ideas. And I'm fully in agreement with Jen that no action is probably the worst option. And, you know, I'm always up for running things more efficiently and hearing what, you know, the next plan is, so stay tuned. Does anybody else, it doesn't sound like anybody else has a question or a comment. So save them up for next time, it sounds like we're going to do this again next time. Write them down, bring them in, you can send them in and, you know, then council has an idea what you're going to ask. You can call, I'm always available, you can all call me, most of the council members are available. Keep moving in that direction, even whoever's in my chair. Next up, I assume we're all wrapped up with that?
Yes.
Any may I ask?
Yes.
Okay. Is, ordinance 967, who's going to introduce that?
Oh, gosh, that's me too.
Oh, kidding.
Sorry. All right. This doesn't look any different from the first reading, so ordinance 967 just basically clarifies mayoral appointments of board members to, and the, and it is a proposal to the voters on the November 2024 ballot so that they can decide if we want to change our charter to read. The mayor shall appoint with a consent of council all members of boards except when board representation and membership is explicitly outlined within Montana code annotated. So that's what that is.
All right. So with that, we'll open the public hearing and the floor is open. If anybody would like to make a comment, please come up to the podium, state your name, state your address, follow the rules on the wall. Do we have anybody who wants to make a comment? Is there anybody online who'd like to make a comment on ordinance 967? To amend the charter clarifying mayoral appointments? Last call. Last call for comments. The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 967 and ordinance of the city of Red Lodge, Montana, to submit to the voters a proposed amendment to the charter of the city of Red Lodge to clarify mayoral appointments of board members.
Is there a second? Any discussion? I know we discussed this last meeting, so if there's any more discussion, let's hear it. Doesn't sound like there's any discussion, am I missing anybody? Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Battle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Keaton?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is Resolution 3635. Who would like to introduce that for the budget amendment?
I'm sorry. They're like, oh. Okay. Resolution number 3635, all of this is, this is just a request from the auditors to itemize where some money is coming from, which is FEMA from our disaster relief fund for the expenditures that we have spent, so we don't have a negative out there. So it's just transferring one, yeah, and just to clarify, this is for fiscal year 2223, not the current, not the current year.
It's, it's a back, it's a just a journal entry correcting the budget.
Yep.
So that we don't have a negative column. There we've got FEMA.
I move to approve Resolution number 3635, budget amendment, resolution amending appropriations and reserves for various funds for fiscal year 2023. And we do, I think this is just a housekeeping thing, but, and we need to, yeah, shall have to change the date to November and to December at the bottom.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I'm just curious on the process, so why was this necessary to be corrected? Did we miss it the first time or?
It's because we don't get reimbursed for FEMA until we spend the money. So we got reimbursed after we closed out.
Yeah, so it was just an offer.
Oh, timing, kind of a timing issue then?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so it's just to clean up the fiscal year 2223, so there isn't a negative in there. It's, it's just a procedural thing to.
Okay.
Have the FEMA check, so.
And for where it goes.
Any more questions or discussions?
No.
All right, roll call.
Battle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Keaton?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
I believe Mrs. Keith is going to introduce Resolution 3611.
I am. This is Resolution 3611, First Amendment, adopting updated building codes for the city of Red Lodge. The only change in this resolution is to add Appendix AQ from the 2021 IRC International Residential Code, which references tiny houses. I don't believe that that actual appendix was put into the packet tonight, but only the resolution itself was included. But the, the appendix is fairly simple and straightforward, length three pages long. If anybody's interested, you can look it up online. So.
Attach it to.
Is what?
We can attach it.
And we can attach it to the minutes or the?
We can put it in the packet.
The packet.
The packet.
Okay. So tiny house or the dwelling unit that's 400 square feet or smaller, not including loft space. And in a nutshell, Appendix AQ is a model building code for tiny houses, providing safety standards for houses that are 400 square feet and under. And the main thing is that it provides variances from regular home building requirements such as reducing headroom, reducing minimum room size, allowing skylights as egress, and reducing the minimum width of stairways, treads and risers, and allowing for ladders to reach cloths. So at the same time, Brian, our building inspector, will still be able to enforce other standard building codes for tiny houses that pertain to things such as snow load, parking, energy, R values, foundations, water, et cetera. So because of the small size, tiny houses naturally are a more budget-friendly option than a traditional house. And the city's adoption of this amendment would support the creative efforts to address our shortage of long-term housing units. It could make it easier for some truly affordable, long-term housing to be developed in our community. So if we don't adopt this amendment, tiny houses will fall under regular building codes, which will make most tiny houses unfeasible. So I just wanted to point out too that this amendment only addresses building codes, not any kind of zoning. So with that, I will open up for discussion.
We should have a motion.
More motion?
I move to approve Resolution number 3611, First Amendment, the resolution adopting updated building related codes for the city of Red Lodge.
I'll second that. Thank you. Okay, discussion?
No questions? Okay. Okay, so there was an email that was sent out and it was talking about tiny homes, that this would help the workforce hazard shortage and, let's see, it would go through the standard zoning regulations rather than needing to go through a subdivision review, which is more cumbersome and expensive. So my question is, if someone was going to do something like Fountain Park with tiny homes, would they have to go through the same sort of thing like a subdivision or does that mean the tiny homes are exempt?
This only addresses the building code?
So do you know where that question was coming up? Because I know we all got this email from Martha.
Yeah, so I think Martha's on one or two of the committees for workforce housing and so I think what they see in the future is that this building code being here is one step for them in the right direction of trying to address how do we make workforce housing as, as easy as possible in Red Lodge. And so this doesn't, this doesn't do exactly what she's saying in there, but it's a step in that direction.
So this has nothing to do with subdivisions or making any exceptions? Okay, I just wanted to make sure because it was confusing.
Well, it does, it does, the variances, when we say that the building code, so, so if you look at the AQ or whatever it is, it, it allows for variances. And I believe in the future, those variances could look at, I wish, I wish that Courtney was here because. Courtney, could you speak to the subdivision thing because I don't want to mess it up?
Yeah, so currently tiny homes are under the state code for manufactured communities, which have to undergo a subdivision review process, which is, there's just a lot more hurdles to kind of jump through in those packages that come through subdivision regulations. And so what could, what could potentially happen with the adoption of this is that if they're no longer considered manufactured because they will be under a, a separate set of regulations, then they will go through, so like Fountain Park was brought up as an example, that would go through a conditional use and design review permitting process through the planning board. So it would still have to address runoff, parking, infrastructure and all of that that a subdivision process regulates, but there's just some bigger assessments and studies that subdivisions require that may be omitted. We can still require, require them if we feel like they're, they'd be necessary, but this kind of gives us a little bit more flexibility.
Thank you. Is that any questions? Sort of. I wish I would have had a chance to read that first.
It still goes through our review and through, yeah, if you're going to do a whole community like that, it still goes through the subdivision review.
Okay.
If it's just.
But it's where a mobile home, a manufactured home park has lots more stringent things that have to go through, then.
Like what? Like for an example? I'm just trying to think of, you know, what kind of things could slip through the cracks with this.
So actually, what Brian expressed during the Admin Committee meeting was that this gives him more room to impose regulation because right now.
In buildings.
Manufactured homes are regulated under HUD and not, and he's not allowed to, he's not allowed to require anything, what, snow load, R values, nothing. And so this would actually remove tiny homes from that, from the HUD, kind of delineation and move them into a place where now he has a little bit more ability to ensure that the structure that's being put in this community can withstand, you know, our weather and et cetera. So, so he was actually advocating at, at the Admin Committee meeting that it's beneficial for him because it gives more flexibility to the city rather than less.
Okay.
Any more questions or discussions? All right, roll call.
Battle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, getting on down through this. We don't have anything from the other three committees and we're down to the ordinance 966. Who would like to introduce that?
Okay. I already have it in the room. Sorry, did you say we're on ordinance 966?
Yeah.
Sorry, that's me. Okay, ordinance 966. This is the second reading of this ordinance establishing the Red Lodge Airport boundary. Nothing's different from the last time we looked at it, although similar to the one we just talked about, the dates of the file need to stay in November instead of October. Yes, this establishes the hour boundary of the airport.
Okay, is there a motion?
Public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Public hearing is open, so if anybody would like to say anything, please press the podium, follow the rules from before, three minutes. And if you have any questions, we'll try and answer them. Public hearing is open, so doesn't sound like there's any questions. Are there any questions online? Last call for public comments with any questions or comments. All right, public hearing is now closed. Now, is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 966 and ordinance of the city of Red Lodge, Montana, establishing the Red Lodge Airport boundary.
I second.
Any discussions? Jim?
I'd like to make a final statement on this and I think ladies ought to consider what you're doing here. We've been, I've been telling you this from the whole time, this isn't just something that's happened the last couple of years, it's been going for 20 years. Mayor mentioned community involvement, there has not been one community meeting held anywhere. And a, public hearing is not a community involvement. I'm sorry. That's not how, there should be meetings, should have had the airport boards engineer, your presentation, bring it up to date, where are they to date? What's their master plan, what's, what's going on? We haven't seen or heard from him in over a year. It's all been about this. So you're going to break this, this boundary first, then you're going to hope for a master plan. Whatever the interim agreement, these were going hand in hand and left to me, there's been no interim agreement. Is that still in the works? Have they accepted it?
Passed last time.
They passed through the county, the airport board agreed?
It passed through the city, was sent on to the mayor and it'll be going on to the county.
It hasn't been to the county.
I don't know. That was, that's in the hands of the mayor.
I have these behind.
I believe that you were going to present it to the county to see.
Sure, I can say those go hand in hand. I really believe, is there any one of you that could pick 10 people out of your, your zone that you're in charge of, that you can, that they know all the information about this airport, what's going on? Any one of you? Can you produce 10 people in your district that can know that information? I doubt it because you don't have all the information. I think doing this right now today is a mistake that will affect this city for decades. There's no rush to do this without the other parts being hand in hand. The master plan, the interim agreement and the boundary should all become together, all together, and community involvement has to be. You're putting this in way, the cart way in front of the horse and I think you're in the biggest mistake any council's made since I've been involved with the city.
I echo what you said, Jim. And I, I think it's ironic that we talked about the budget in one breath and then we're giving away, not, I mean, I mean. and then we're giving away, not, I mean, and we're not talking about the airport and we're not talking about emergency services. We're talking about four acres with no specified use. And we're talking about the whole south end of the airport that has no specific proposed use. And, and once it's removed, we, we can't use it for economic development. But, but no studies have been done. I mean, I said it earlier. So I just, I'm just, you know, you, you all have heard everything I have to say many times and, but I, everything Jim said and, you know, I, I'd agree. I don't, I don't think it's a good idea at all. Courtney, if you had any, do you have anything you want to add? Your, your mic's off, but I don't know if you're talking or. But anyway, so I, I was wondering, I believe Terry, you said that there was, the cost of the survey was going to be paid for by the grant for the master plan?
I sent the response to Jody, I didn't say that. What I said was you should ask that to Denison because when I talked to Denison, he said the cost for the surveying of this would be covered in the grant that's going on for the master plan. So you should ask Denison.
Denison, did you hear Terry? Are you there?
Yes. And my understanding, speaking with the, the engineer, is that the master plan, the grant from the master plan for the federal government will cover the cost of the survey and will cover additional costs if the master plan is finalized. And it doesn't have to be accepted by the governments, it just has to be finalized.
Okay, so do we need any more assurances or the ordinance or anything for that? Or do we just take that?
No, I believe the last time we talked about, I mean, when we were talking, when this ordinance was in discussion and we went back and forth about whether or not we wanted one outer boundary or multiple boundaries, what I recollect is that the discussion landed with it is important for this community to have an outer boundary identifying what the airport is regardless of what the master plan wants or needs in the future. And that if we have a master plan that's approved in the future and those costs are covered by that master plan, then excellent. But if not, then it is a good use of city dollars to have one boundary delineating what we talk about when we talk about the airport. Because right now we do not have one who is screwed upon and that is a problem. So I believe that is where we landed when we decided to have number one, say, the Red Lodge Airport Boundary is hereby established with one. Or number two, I guess, the outer boundary of the airport.
And I think it's really great to have a boundary. I think, I don't think anybody's against having a boundary, but it, it, is it a little arbitrary? The, the four acres and the south, the whole south end without any specified purpose against the said stuff?
I mean, Mayor, we, we've talked about this. I believe that the last time what we, what we discussed was that, and what I have said multiple times is that I wasn't prepared to vote, would not vote on an ordinance to address the boundary without an ordinance to address the interlocal agreement. And that four acres was a negotiation to get that interlocal agreement to read in such a way that it is beneficial to the city in a way that it was not in 2018. And that was the negotiation that we landed on. And some folks might disagree with that, but that's, that's why that's there. And so these two, these two documents go together. The interlocal agreement was passed last time because it only takes one vote, this one takes two.
But the, the interlocal agreement is not done until the other party accepts it.
Correct.
So, and, I mean, when, when you transfer land, you know.
We're not transferring land, this is an ordinance establishing the boundary. And if the interlocal agreement is not agreed to by the county, the next city government, the next council can undo this ordinance in the same way that they can undo any ordinance.
But you're transferring the use of that land from the city to the airport. And so what is that based on?
It only transfers the land if there's an interlocal agreement in place. If there's no interlocal agreement in place, then it becomes a city airport as of December 31st.
Well, this includes it in the boundary.
It does, but if we don't have an interlocal agreement in place and it's a city airport, the city council can change that boundary at any time that it wants to.
I, I guess, you know, it's just fascinating to me that, you know, these conversations about money and raising taxes that we're going to just blindly oblige a lot of land for no specific purpose to a boundary that will remove it from our, the use of the city or, or a development plan or something.
And again, the four acres, if it is going to be developed, will need to be developed in a way that is consistent. Like it will be put into a master plan and will have all input at that time.
And it's right next to a runway. I don't, I, I, I guess I fail to see what other use it would be besides something to do with the airport. Maybe I'm not being creative enough, but, you know, you, you've thrown out things like assisted living facility. I don't think you want to put an assisted living facility right next to a runway. You know, I.
Have you done any, that is on.
Can we end this debate? And I moved, I moved the previous question. We are going around and around and around covering the same information at each meeting. And so why don't we just go for a vote? I believe the only, I don't believe either city council people have any other questions that haven't voted to let, I, again, I moved the previous question and we go to a vote.
All right, well, is there a second for Terry's motion? And so we'll open that motion up for discussion. I think this is big enough to at least finish the discussion. If Jim had any, and can you please keep your noises to yourself? I would like to finish the discussion properly and with respect for the people that would like to finish it. This is our last vote on this issue. This is an issue that is going to affect lands worth a million or more dollars essentially. And so the question was, are there other uses for this?
I thought this was seconded though.
Excuse me?
I made a motion to end the debate and it was seconded.
And we're having a discussion about your motion.
Can we hear from city council people, the voting people?
We're having a discussion. Anybody would like to participate, please be respectful. So would anybody else like to make a comment on her motion?
I, I tend to agree. I, I think everyone has a right to voice their opinion, but after I've heard the same argument every meeting for the last four meetings, I, I would like to vote and.
Any more, any more comments? I'd like to hear from Jim more.
I, I made my statement. I just said if you pass this boundary at this time without all the other pieces together, it's a big mistake. And then you are making that decision and that's your decision, make it. But I'll guarantee you it'll come back and bite you in the ass.
And.
And let, let them vote.
So if there's no more comments on the motion, then we have a roll call in the motions.
Which, which motion to end debate?
To end the debate. Terry is forcing the issue and so.
Okay, Battle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Are we voting to end the debate?
Yes.
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
All right, so roll call on the.
On ordinance 966.
Thank you.
Battle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
No.
Keith?
No.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you. And that should end much of the airport debate. Until the next time. If there's any correspondence in your packet and without the means of journal, thank you.